Process of reflection guided by the NJGPA through which the board strives to improve our governance. This evaluation is required annually for the board to maintain our certifications. That's it from our report tonight. I hope everyone's having a great summer and I'll pass it over to Dr. Portis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Senek. Keep my report maybe not equally brief, but also brief. Happy New Year. School year officially started on July 1st. I'm excited. This is my 29th year in education, my seventh as a super, which is the longest that in the last 50 years in this district. We think maybe longer, but we don't have the data for it. Nevertheless, really excited for the 25-26 school year. Last week, we had our admin retreat, which we found to be very successful, was a really satisfying experience. We focused on data presentations from each of the five schools. The real focus there was on proficiency on standardized assessments as well as some internal metrics. We also looked at cohort progress and other trends. We won't necessarily have the growth data until September or October when the state releases that, but we were able to at least compare how cohorts are faring over the years. And by and large, the results were quite strong, so we're really excited about that. I am looking forward to the October 27th district assessment data presentation. Mrs. Vancicle may or may not be aware that she's going to largely lead that. I'll be there as pretty much the pip to your Gladys Knight, but I'm excited about what we're going to be sharing at that because if the initial results are any evidence, we're doing quite well. And actually tonight, when we present on the NJGPA data as well as the Access for Ls, also strong data there, again, I will be more or less the backup singer there. We also focused on goal setting. This comprised a large portion of the first day. The data presentation should inform what we're looking at for those goals. First goal, we're going to focus on the profile of a Poquonic student or Poquonic graduate again. It's a three-year goal. This is the third year of it, but truthfully, it's actually a four-year goal because year four is the implementation thereof. Third year is completing the planning process and determining where we can apply this through curriculum and other avenues. And I do think it's a really nice show of the stability that we have in this district right now, which is a byproduct of this group at the table, including those who are absent, as well as so many other stakeholders. But it's nice to have that type of continuity so that we can focus on a three-year goal and then look to implement in the fourth year. Our second goal focuses on gathering and applying data to measure student learning and growth. This follows the ensuring staff success component of our strategic plan. This one is incredibly data-heavy and we're really excited about that. This is right up Mrs. Vancicle's alley, so I know she was leading the charge there, but I think our supervisors and principals were really excited to get involved with this and look at how they can help staff members to generate meaningful data from what they observe in their class from their students and then can present that back to the administrative team. And then the final one is family and community partnerships. That's the strategic plan thread, and that one we titled collaborating and forming and improving communication. We're looking at developing a couple of different communication plans. One is the crisis communication plan. Mr. Reiner and Mr. Lucas have already made a lot of progress on that one. They're looping in Mr. Shea as well to make sure that we can push it out in an electronic medium and use technology to the greatest of our advantage. Just got an email today from Mr. Hazler who was asking if we can loop in the formation of an alumni network as part of that. I think it's a wonderful idea, so some really good ideas coming out of this. I felt like the collaborative environment of the admin retreat helped make this happen. We also received legal training. Administrators are supposed to receive two hours annually of legal training. We took care of that and it went nicely. Spent a lot of time focusing on best practice in terms of whatever we're doing from a leadership perspective and also spent some time in team building because you really want people to feel like they can trust one another and be able to depend on each other. So it was nice to see and yeah, and just gives us a lot of optimism heading into this upcoming school year. In August, we have a few things coming up. The senior portraits are going to take place August 12th through 14th. New staff orientation is going to take place on August 18th through August 20th. This one, Mrs. Vancicle also gets to lead on that one. I'll give a nice three, bless you, three-minute greeting on the 18th, make sure everybody feels welcome and happy. But I'm excited about that too because really you want to set a strong first impression with the new staff and hopefully it leads to long productive careers for them. And then we have new student orientations coming up later on in August. We're welcoming new students to the high school as well as middle school and then as we welcome families who are moving to our community into the elementary schools as well as our kindergartners. So a lot of exciting things there. And then I alluded before to an August 27th presentation on district assessment data. We're also going to present at our Cedar Crest meeting on September 15th. We're going to present information on the Portia graduate. That's going to be led by Dr. O'Keefe and Mr. Hazler. I think our friends at Cedar Crest are really going to enjoy the content of that and I think they're going to really enjoy the energy and information from Dr. O'Keefe and Mr. Hazler. And then on October 6th, we're going to present on our AP data. We also want to do some recognition of our AP scholars. Mr. Hazler is going to lead the charge on that one as well. Spoiler alert, the information is really good, so we're very excited about it and are really looking forward to helping to spread the good news and share our success with the greater community. One final note, I should point out that we're in the process of forming our CUSAC committee. Mrs. Vancicle received something from somebody who might be moving into the county to work with our committee. Yep, but apparently it sounds like the person wants to get started with us in September. And I'm just going to point out that Mrs. Vancicle blamed me because my position is, hey, you guys want to come here early? Come here early, that's fine. That position is not unilaterally positive, but something I'm really proud of is we've had at least four board members volunteer to be on the CUSAC committee, which I think shows tremendous commitment and involvement. Admin team, I'm getting a lot of people want to be a part of this, so it's not the most exciting of processes, but it's a really important one. It happens every three years and we're going to be ready to go whether the county comes in in October or perhaps much later, which would be preferential to my friend to my left. But anyway, a lot of good things coming up and it's been a good summer thus far. We're making good progress in getting our buildings ready. Mr. Anderson gave me a quick update yesterday. Sounds like we're making tremendous progress and if you get a chance to check out the SJG parking lot, looks good. So that's my report.
I just want to say that you are such a teacher that you made a joke and you said, "Happy New Year," since the school year started again. It's like the same joke that the elementary school teacher used to get me on every year when we'd leave for Christmas break. She'd say, "See you next year," and I'd be bewildered. So, good joke.
Okay. Let's make sure my clicker works. I think I need an extra space. Are you going to hang with me? Okay. All right, so we're going to present on the NJGPA and the access results. So first NJGPA, just a real quick to recapture, the New Jersey GPA assessment measures graduation readiness. It is given to the 11th grade students in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics. Basically, the ELA component is aligned to grade 10 and the math is aligned to Algebra I and Geometry. They're not very long. They're like 20 questions for ELA and 30 questions in math. Basically, students who, we'd like them to get a 725 to pass to show they're graduation ready. If they do not, they have the opportunity to retake it either in the summer or the fall, or they can possibly use another test like the SAT or something in order, with a different cut score in order to substitute for that. There's another option also with a portfolio appeal where basically they have to create, not create, complete performance tasks that will then count as their substitution for the ELA or the math component. So this graph shows where Poquonic students rated on the different questions based on the standards. The questions are in order from most difficult to the least difficult. The blue line is the state average and the green dots show Poquonic's average. Our students are really outperforming the state average across the board. So these are the breakdown of the numbers. So all of these are based on percent. This is ELA first. We have the track record going from 2022 to 2025. We had 151 students take the test this year. The score changed to 725 in 2023 from 750 in 2022. And we show all the different demographics. Just a note on the multilingual learners, we have a super teeny, teeny, tiny little portion of 11th graders that were multilingual learners, so that score represents one of like five. So it's very, very small numbers. What we're excited about is our average scale score. You can see Poquonic had an average score of 806 compared to the state of 768 and you need a 725 to pass. So really, our students are doing outstanding. We had 94.5% of them pass. The state average is only 80%. And then you can see the demographic breakdown of students. Yes. That was 750. It is a strong compelling reason for why it was, we lowered the bar. So they say, yeah.
The initial recommendation had been to make the cut score 725 for the state school board, decide 750 was the cutoff.
I also don't, yeah, and I don't know that the state realizes, it's 20 questions. That's it. Your whole college career or your whole high school career, 20 questions. So then we just did some notable achievements. As I noted already, our percent of passing and our scale score. And then in our demographics, we also noted the average scale score in some of our demographics was awesome as well. So again, with that average of 768, just look how high these students are scoring. And then, yes? How many, yes, speaking to the mic, sorry. How many students are in each demographic?
Yes.
I could break it out, but if it's less than 10, I'm not supposed to share publicly because that then is a indicator.
Okay.
Other notable work, we use Common Lit benchmarks in order to help our teachers get a gauge on where the students are with their reading proficiency. We've been providing more professional learning on small group reading and writing. And we're also doing a bunch of curriculum writing list work this year on writing benchmarks. So we're really trying to increase the writing stamina. And then we have ongoing vertical articulation. It says grade six to 12, but really, we're doing a lot of vertical articulation across K to 12 in different grades, so. Interventions for ELA. So again, we only had a few students not pass it, but what we want to pay attention to is if we have students who are in any of those demographics in particular that we realize based on their grade nine NJSLA data and/or earlier, that we can actually start compiling a portfolio assessment for them earlier. We don't have to wait till grade 11 and that way, if they don't need it, great, well, we already had it and it was good practice, but if they do need it, we've already started that process, so it makes senior year a little less stressful. They don't have to worry about making that up in senior year. So I think that's one important piece. When I just got the data that I can break down by student, so right now, I'm in the process of putting that into a form where the ELA team members, the teachers and the supervisors can go over and the principals can go over that very specific data on the students, get a sense of trends from last year and the year before moving forward. Are there particular domains where we noticed students need more support? Last year, it was informational text, so we kind of want to see where we're at with that. We also have our Science and Social Studies Department working collaboratively to increase the amount of informational reading skills and writing. So there's a lot going on across departments in order to increase student ELA proficiency. If we need to do any remediation, we can use Common Lit as a tool for learning instruction as well as a benchmark. And this year, they're going to be focusing, as well as our district goal has a lot to do with teachers identifying data in their class, we want to also get the students' goal setting on their data. So then math. Again, the blue line is the state average and the green dots are the Poquonic students who had those questions, how they fared, ordered from most difficult to the least difficult. And I will tell you that this test is mostly, it's half algebra, half geometry, 30 questions. So again, same process. All of these numbers represent percent except for the first, well, the first three, the second and third columns, those are the scale scores. So same process as ELA. The score changed to 725 in 2023. Still had 151 students take the assessment. Our multilingual learners actually did much better in math than they did in ELA, which actually makes sense depending upon how well they're, how far along they are with the English language. The state average on this is only 736. We were at a 756, so we're still outperforming the state in that zone. And we had 83.4% of our students show graduation ready. So we have a few more students in math that had to do another test and we actually had several students take the Accuplacer after this and then they passed that and that counts. So we're already, I think we're down to like two or three students that have to either do the portfolio or take the NJGPA again in the fall and see if they could pass it there. Anything else on this? I don't think so. So again, with some notables, our demographics still outperforming the state average, which I think is great. Again, we have ongoing vertical articulation between our different courses. We're going to be breaking down the data again in the geometry and algebra. I can get it right down to how many points each part is worth, so we'll go over that with the teachers and analyze anywhere we need to improve our tier one instruction. And we're still doing Conquer Math, so we have high school teachers attending that as well, so we're excited to keep going with that. Similar to the ELA, we're going to start working with students as early as we can in ninth grade on compiling portfolio items if we notice that there's a trend where they might have trouble passing the NJGPA in grade 11. The math teams will go over the evidence statements and the heat maps that we'll create based on the data we're pulling together. We really worked on modeling and reasoning tasks and we think that really is helping across the board from grade three up in improving our scores. And we're also looking at final exam data in order to help us get a sense of what we need to adjust for next year's instruction. Oh, and one other thing, it is really important to have calculators in hand while you're doing these tests as opposed to trying to use the computer calculator. And we're also using patty paper with our geometry test now, which is transparent paper if you haven't used it, which is great for doing different things on the coordinate plane. So we're really trying to get more hands-on with the math as much as we can, as much as we're allowed to, with these assessments because I think it makes a total difference. So next steps, really focusing on a lot of data, a lot of growth and goal setting. Again, all of this has to do with us taking apart that data, looking at down to the individual students and across the courses and looking at, are there particular domains or topics where we notice that we need to do a better job of instruction? So just reviewing all those trends, it's really important. Grade eight maths NJSLA mimics the grade 11 NJGPA very closely. So we're actually looking at that data to see what are the connections there. We're doing a lot of curriculum writing in math this year because we have to approve the 2023 standards by September's board meeting, so we're in the process of doing all that. And again, doing a lot of training with the teachers, not only on Conquer Math, but even in the curriculum writing we've been doing over the last two weeks. I've had a bunch of teachers in mostly grades three to eight, but still, when you're doing curriculum writing and you're working with them, we're training them and it's been amazing. So I got a lot of positive feedback from them, so we'll continue that growth with the high schools as well. Any questions on NJGPA? Looking good. Okay, so Access for Ls, two slides. So overall, we had 37 students from K to 12 have to take the access test. You can see the different languages that our students speak. Overall, for the 37 students, we had an average of about a 3.5. In order for a student to exit the ESL program, they need a 4.5. And then we broke down how many students are at each level. We did have eight students exit the program in 24-25 and we had seven students refuse services, students who refused services but are eligible still have to take the access test. So of those 37, seven of them would have not been in the program but still have to take the test. And this break, this chart, which I forgot to put on for you, is, just shows us the breakdown of, there's six different levels on the access test and you can see where most of our students land, right about the, between two and four right now, which is great because depending upon what year they're in in the program, we want them, you know, we want them to move forward. But by the time they hit four and a half, they're exiting. So we don't expect to see a lot of fives and sixes because they probably exited before they would have shown the proficiency in that. So we want to get them past the four. So we're moving forward every year. Any question on access? Thank you.
So I know this question comes up a lot with any standardized testing and we're comparing ourselves to the state. Is there any way to drill down to more comparable schools, more demographic, geographic, you know, similarities versus just blanketing, just saying the state?
It's a good question. The state used to give us the, they would label schools with a letter, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. They don't do that anymore, so now I'm, so we can, when the school performance reports come out, we can do that, but that's not until March. So by the time we're hitting that, we're already on to like our next set of testing. But it's something we possibly could look at to see.
Yeah, I think it's just a gap when we really don't know, you know, our peers.
We want to be like somebody else. We want to see what they're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We could talk about it.
Yeah, and I don't know how many districts are posting their presentations, but we could do a little surfing on the internet and see what we can find. That's something that we can share, that's not just for you.
And if there's particular districts you're interested in, I think that's another, like we can dig deep and see what we can find in the school performance reports as well, too.
Yeah, and something I've done in the past is looking at the former district factor groups. We were GH, but looking one level above what we were and then one level below and just looking for schools of, or districts of comparable size and see the performance comparisons. Something I like to, we talked about the data and reasoning and how that was something we focused on. That was something that came out of last year's admin retreat. When we were going through the data presentations at different levels, we realized this was a reoccurring theme and that's something to Anne Marie's credit. She picked up on it and really ran with it for this school year and we see the outcomes in that, in that chart, that table that shows how our students were doing on those particular standards. And the standards really are just skills. I mean, they're skills that kids have to be able to demonstrate mastery of. Overall, I'm quite pleased with the results. It was inevitable that our ELA number was going to go down since it was 100% back in 2024, so we slipped a little bit there, but we're looking for perfection and we're going to keep striving for it.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs, you have a report?
Yes. Good evening. Tonight's board agenda is the approval of a new SDA grant in the amount of $2.9 million, of which the school will be responsible for $1.7 million. The grant is for new air handlers and some HVAC units for each of the schools. The grant will be budgeted over the next three years. Also on tonight's board agenda is the approval of the purchase agreement for the new board office at 494 Newark Pompem Turnpike in the amount of $575,000. There's an acceptance of non-public school nursing funds in the amount of $27,690. These funds will go to non-public schools in the area for nursing, supplies, and services. On July 7th, the resurfacing and striping of the parking lot at the Stephen J. Gerace Elementary School was completed. The fieldwork part of the 2024-25 audit started on Monday, July 7th, and is anticipated to be completed by October 15th. The audit is due to the state by December 15th, 2025. Finally, this is just a reminder for those board members planning on attending the New Jersey School Boards Conference in Atlantic City in October. If you haven't done so, please confirm the dates that you'll be staying at the hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now move on to approval of the minutes. I'm going to ask Ms. Icaio to please move the minutes.
I would like to move the minutes from June 23rd, 2025.
Second.
Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Icaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney's absent, Mr. Pompeo is absent, Mrs. Shenton's absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, it brings us to the first opportunity for public comment and there is no public here, so I'm going to move on to approval of the action items. First up is PMC and I want to ask Mr. Cerisi to please move the items under PMC.
I would like to move PMC 01-26 through PMC 22-26.
Second.
Any question or discussion?
Yeah, I'm just going to, I know this isn't a formal workshop, but I know at each of the workshop meetings, I provide staffing updates, so I think it's relevant here. We are currently in search of two Spanish teachers. We had two who had accepted our offers and then later expressed otherwise, so we see one being rescinded, another one we were able to pull before the agenda went public. So the search continues there and Dr. O'Keefe is also looking for backup options if we're not able to find someone through the search process. As you know, there's a shortage in the state and we're doing our best to find people who we could put, who will be effective instructors for our students. We also have posted for a special ed science teacher at the high school. This is another one that's a very difficult find. This falls under the highly qualified umbrella where the person needs a science cert as well as a special ed cert. We do have a staff member who's currently working towards achieving that level. She's not quite there yet, so meantime, we're posting for the position, but it's fishing in barren waters. And then we also have a posting for part-time LDTC. This is again, this is a difficult position to fill. We're not so sure that there's anybody out there. We had a lead on someone, but they ended up taking their talents to another district. And then we, of course, posted for elementary lunch aids for anybody who's ever been a lunch aid. It is the single greatest job in the history of humanity. It's fulfilling, it's exciting, it's really more things than I could possibly describe. So if you know someone who might be interested, please spread the word of the most gratifying and outstanding job a person could have, elementary school lunch aid.
All right, Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Icaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney's absent, Mr. Pompeo's absent, Mrs. Shenton's absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to take a moment just to thank the PTHS Association of Music Parents for their generous donations to the high school.
Okay, and next up is policy and I'm going to ask Ms. Esposito again to move that item.
Sure, I'd like to move policy P 01-26.
Second. Let me give that one to Gitten. Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Actually, a couple of quick things. Sorry. Hi, I'm the human meeting extender. One thing that
Yes, give me one second. I'm a little behind today. I would like to move CIS 0-26 through CIS 07-26.
Second.
Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Icaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney's absent, Mr. Pompeo's absent, Mrs. Shenton's absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, up next is FFA. Mr. Blumer, would you please move the items under FFA?
I'd like to make a motion to move FFA 01-26 through FFA 18-26.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Icaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney's absent, Mr. Pompeo's absent, Mrs. Shenton's absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to take a moment just to thank the PTHS Association of Music Parents for their generous donations to the high school.
Okay, and next up is policy, and I'm going to ask Ms. Esposito again to move that item.
Sure, I'd like to move policy P 01-26.
Second.
Let me give that one to Gitten. Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Actually, a couple of quick things, sorry. Sorry. Hi, I'm the human meeting extender. One thing that Mr. McSweeney and I had discussed via email is we are currently putting up for approval our acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. The policy focuses on AI for students. We did talk about whether we should have something in place for staff, and I don't know that we necessarily need the policy to regulate staff use, but I do think it's good, almost as a position statement, to say we do support staff using this as it can help create greater efficiency for them, save time, whether it's in providing assessment feedback, planning, a few other things. Can't be used right now for writing IEPs or anything else that involves sensitive data or information until we get our own internal AI, which is probably not too far down the pike. But I just want to point out that that's something we have discussed. There's been no noise or movement from Strauss on that, but internally, we've discussed it. And then the board has access to, or a living document that I have about policies that we're looking to address. And I just want to point out there are four that I'm looking to get finalized in time for the start of the school year. We do have two more board meetings before the first day when we have students. And those policies are 2340, which is field trips. We want to tweak something about the transportation language. 2624 is grading system. There are actually a number of changes we want to make there, and not the least of which is about the philosophy governing grading. 5430, class rank, there, I, I have several issues with the language. I feel like it's not, not written as clearly as it could be. And 8454, management particularosis, particularosis is lice. Our nursing team had presented a few recommendations and what they believe is best practice. We do have to make sure we follow the law and that we're consistent with serving our community as best we can while also being efficient and effective. So we'll, we'll piece that together. So those should be ready for first readings in time for the August meeting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Icaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney's absent, Mr. Pompeo's absent, Mrs. Shenton's absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Gitten, would you please move other?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move other, O-1-26.
Second.
Cerisi, second. Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Ms. Icaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney's absent, Mr. Pompeo's absent, Mrs. Shenton's absent, Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that opens it up to the second opportunity for public comment. And again, no one has materialized, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any board member with any unfinished business?
Yeah, real quick, the, the date of the retreat, what, what's attendance going to be? Because I, I'm just, I wish we kind of gathered more dates of availability to see if we could find a common day for full attendance.
It's going to be eight out of nine.
What?
Eight out of nine.
We still should have gathered the affirmation, though.
Anybody else? Anybody with new business? Board member announcements? Okay, we do have consideration for executive session, where we will discuss contractual matters and personnel matters. No action will be taken. We will adjourn from there. Our next meeting will be August 18th here at the high school, 7 o'clock. Is there a motion to go into executive?
Motion to go into executive.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.